We're not two minutes early, but we've got some people that need to be placed, so we're gonna go ahead and get started.
I don't think they care.
Hey Dale, we're gonna start.
So, before I call the meeting open, we'll stand and do the pledge.
Pledge allegiance.
We'll do your roll call. Dave Smith?
Here.
Matt Meredith?
Present.
Tom Schaefer?
Present.
Mike Sprinkle?
Here.
Mike Myers?
Here.
Joanne McCracken?
Here.
And myself, Tony Duncin. All right, first thing is the minutes from last month's meeting. If you've got in front of you, if you've had time to read them. Any questions? I guess I'll ask Joanne.
There's one thing under Baker Tilly that, what, right under the minutes, you know, I don't see, it doesn't say like that it was passed unanimously. It shows who made the motion and who seconded, but most time they've always put that. That's the only thing I saw.
She's got that.
With that change, I'll make a motion with minutes be approved.
Motion by Dave.
I'll second that.
Second by Joanne. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign? Let's pass. Next thing, Baker Tilly Comprehensive Financial Plan. As we talked last month, we thought it was a little salty, so Patty and I met, we took out eight, seven, eight line items. See, they came back nine thousand dollars less, thirty six thousand dollars. That's without the fancy charts that I don't think we need to be paying thousand dollars for fancy charts. So you can look through it, discuss it, see what you think, but we've talked about it with budget time coming up, we either need to, we need to have some motion on it, either decide we need to do it, or decide we don't and be done. Talked about it, I think, three times now, so.
Tony, one of the things I'd like to add to the council members that Jason Simler reminded me of, and that is if the county has the thought that there may be some bonding in the future this year, next year, which I know with the courthouse, that may be a possibility, then this is, the comprehensive plan is critical in your bond rating call. So that, of course, converts to money for the county on interest saved. But those bond calls are quite in-depth, and the comprehensive plan for a county is one of the critical questions in that call.
I don't think there's any doubt that there won't be a bond.
He said some counties just automatically update their comprehensive plan for two years just for the fact of the bond rating.
Patty, does that affect it if we did cut those, or if we just had a comprehensive? Then some of those accounts were taken out, or are they looking at the whole picture?
Well, the ones that Tony and I reviewed and took out were a few of them, that in particular was a grant. Community Corrections Fund was taken out, Adult Protective Services Grant was taken out. Those are more regulated by the amount of money that we get from the state grants, so those were two. River, did we take Riverboat out?
Several of them don't have, they don't have a lot of activity either way anyway.
Right, so we did take a few of those funds out that just to try to trim back, as Tony said, on the overall cost. The cost for the plan itself, by taking out funds, you're not seeing a big change in it due to the fact that the funds itself is not the key part, it's the expertise that you're paying for, for Baker Tilly. But Jason also reduced the amount for the capital plan, citing that if we do most of the front work, and they don't have to meet individually with all the different stakeholders and the office holders and to project future plans, and we can do that in-house, so he knocked off quite a bit for that, but they'll work with us well on that. I mean, we know what plans, council commissioners, we know a few things that are for sure, plans that you want to plan for in the future, and then as far as the others, we can, we can solicit that from the different departments and do that on our own and not require them to spend time on that.
Sounds good. Additional questions, comments?
So the last plan is thirty thousand, five thousand, one thousand, is that?
Those are all together, that's the total, so it's nine thousand less than the other.
Yeah.
Instead of not to exceed forty-five, now it's not to exceed thirty-six.
Right, right. I just want to understand it. And the areas we're looking at are the general, edit, development, local road and street, MVH, TIF, aviation, Cune Bridge, health, MVH and reassessment, and TIF capital project, is that correct?
Yes, that list on that, I believe it's on the first or second page there. So most of those consist of the levied funds that we collect a tax levy on.
Just want to make sure I understand.
I would say we definitely need to go forward with some plan with Baker Tilly. We've used them before and back before they were Baker Tilly when they were umball, and they've always done good work for us, we can trust them. Worked with Jason and Paige before, so.
Was that a motion?
Yes, it is a motion. Proceed with the plan as presented.
Okay.
Second to motion.
Motion by Smires, second by Matt. All in favor, continue to do this with Baker Tilly, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Six, zero. Next, the Adult Protective Services Grant and Community Corrections, those come up at the end of June, correct, budget calendar-wise?
Right, their contracts end the end of June.
I think, yeah, I know, you're, Rob will discuss this for a little bit.
I'm pretty soft spoken, so can I pull my mask down? I've had both shots. Okay, fire away.
Fire away as in?
What do you guys want to know about the grant? What's coming? Or do you just want me to start where we're at right now?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Well, where we're at right now, I talked to the the Assistant APS State Director yesterday, and Sherry informs me that they are working on the grants they're going to come out with for all the units. Typically, they get those done somewhere around middle of May, clear till the end of June. But right now, I can't tell you what our grant's gonna be. Now, my assumption is gonna be this is gonna be the same amount as last year. And the reason for that is, according to Sherry, is the governor has came out and said he wants everyone to have a fifteen percent reduction. We're part of the FSSA, so likely that fifteen percent isn't going to come out of the units' money, but it's going to come out of the FSSA as a whole. So I don't anticipate our grant going down fifteen percent. But that's still, that basically puts us right back to where we were at with this last grant contract. It's actually a contract, which would be a hundred and ninety-three thousand for operating and my glasses, I can't say it exactly. It'd be a hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. There's a six thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollar emergency funds budget, which that six thousand can only be used for my cases that are in life-threatening emergency situations. So there's a very, very narrow criteria that I can spend that six thousand on, so what we're talking about is the hundred and ninety-three thousand for next year. Now, that's not in stone, but that's what I'm anticipating it's probably gonna be.
But you spent two forty-eight or something like that last year, right?
Yes. Yeah, and that, that all came from the health insurance that the county had been providing before, that now had to come out of our budget, so you guys know about that. Now, they are going to apply for, or they're, they're applying for some CARES Act funding. That's gonna be a one point seven million dollar grant. They are gonna spend it all. It's gonna be on the new, a half million dollars is gonna be on the new case management system. Two hundred thousand on training, hundred fifty thousand on equipment, which will be divided out between the units. Finish the SOP process, which has been going on for three years. Seventy-five thousand, personal protective equipment, hundred and ten thousand. Capable services, which basically what that means is all the units are gonna have some extra money to, like if we go into a house that's a hoarding situation, we can pay a cleaning service to come in. That's gonna be two hundred and fifty thousand. Public education, a hundred and fifty thousand. Case management contractor, seventy-five thousand, and the amount that's gonna actually get out of that one point seven, it's actually gonna get sent out to the units, is two hundred and fifty-five thousand, which will be divided by seventeen units. They have not come up with a formula yet for how much each unit's gonna get. So out of one point seven million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand's going out to the units. The rest of it'll be up to state office and dispersed for whatever those things I just mentioned. So we're not gonna get, my understanding is that of the two hundred and fifty-five thousand, the portion that our unit will get, we'll be able to spend it on COVID-related things, so our health insurance isn't gonna be considered a help, a COVID-related thing. If, what they're saying is, and they've came up with no guidelines on this yet, if I get a call and I go into someone's home that has COVID, I can come up with some sort of hazard pay or something. Basically, they have no idea what that means. They have no idea how they're gonna do that. But it's gonna be extraordinarily important for them to come up with that because we get audited by the FSSA, and they are, those folks have no sense of humor and are very thorough, I'll put it that way. So they're gonna, so, so even though that may come out somewhere in April, we may or may not get to spend it right away because they may not have any guidelines on how to do it, which then may fall onto you all to come up with some sort of guideline. I'm hoping that they will come up with a guideline. So that's kind of where we're at. The other, around in October, Dan had us draft up a letter to send out to the other counties to try to ask them to send funds for us. I will tell you, I've done that before in years past, several times. I've went and met with judges, I've went and met with the various prosecutors I've dealt with through the years, and basically, the, the first question that comes out is, do we have to spend, do we have to give you any money? And I said, no, the statute doesn't say that you shall, but you can. There's the door. It's not that they don't like what we do, they know, there's, there's no issue of the importance of what we do and the appreciation of what we do. But when you're talking about some of the counties in my area, they're, are, they're some of the poorest counties in the state. Which my argument has been, when I've went into the state office, you know, we really, our unit needs more money because we're dealing with some of the poorest people. And that gets met with, we're gonna do it by population only, and that's, that's the criteria. Said, well, I strongly disagree with that. I think that, I don't think you can compare a county that, you know, has Carmel and Fishers in it compared to some of the counties we have and some of the towns that we have that have been decimated.
Just for clarification, what counties are you talking about?
Okay, I'm talking about Green, Davies and Martin, Pike, Knox and Dubois.
But Dubois County has the same, I mean, they're not sitting.
Dubois County, Dubois County's in pretty good shape.
Yeah.
They, they, they gave me like five hundred dollars back in two thousand and ten, I believe.
Five hundred dollars.
Green County actually gave us like fifteen hundred back then, but it came with a note that says, don't ever ask for any more again. So, I, okay. Yeah. So, so we're short of the state giving us extra money, we're gonna be probably back in the same situation we were in. Now, the bright spot. When I talked to Sherry, because I talked to her actually prior to this, really right after we, the last budget adoption hearing, I said, Sherry, is there anything we can do? I said, I've worked with the county, I've worked with Patty extensively, we've looked for money everywhere we can try to find it. She said, well, here's the thing, Rob, we've got other units that have extra money, and they turn it back in every year because their budgets don't get approved by their counties for the amount that their, that their contract can be. So, for example, one unit gets about two hundred and fifty thousand, but they're only allowed to spend two hundred. So that fifty goes back into the pot every year. If that unit will agree, and their prosecutor councils, whatever, will agree to let us have that, they can shift that into our budget and make up the shortfall. That's what I'm hoping for. If that doesn't work, and it, and it, and it might not, honestly, I'll be honest with you, it may not work. They could very easily say no. You know, we're gonna be right back to where we were at. And, and I know there's gonna have to be some tough decisions to be made, and I, I don't know that I've got a lot of any other answers.
So, basically what we're saying is we're fifty thousand dollars short from what we're spending to what we're, the grant is.
Roughly.
And we're also saying that the other counties have just snubbed and said no, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we're funding now.
And you or Dan have talked to the representatives from these counties as well?
There's a couple that we haven't yet. I haven't talked to Dubois yet. And Martin, I haven't talked to Martin yet, but I can tell you Martin is, Martin's broke. Dubois is our best chance, but I, I don't want to give anyone the illusion that we have any chance of getting fifty thousand from Dubois County. I'd say it's virtually impossible. And it's not fair. I, I have been advocating, along with the other unit directors for years, that the legislature needs to change that because it's not fair for the Hub County to cover these other counties. Because we spend a lot of time, believe me, a lot of time in these other counties. And the last state APS director that went to the governor's office was essentially told, if there's a problem, it's your fault, you can either resign or you can be fired. So she resigned that Friday. And that was with IPAC support, too. So, I, you know, I don't want to be on a soapbox, and I, but I've been frustrated with this issue for years, and we've got thirty million dollars extra for trails that they're gonna make out through the woods here around here shortly. But we can't give Rob fifty thousand dollars to help people be able to use them. That's the irony. And, and I had a case similar here of a woman that hadn't walked in twenty years. She'd been abused, neglected, it's one of the worst cases I've ever had. And that includes my law enforcement cases. And, you know, the other day, she took two steps and hadn't walked in several decades. That's not important, but a trail is. So, I won't blame the council, or Dan, or anyone if they decide that enough is enough. If that happens, I don't want anyone to feel guilty about any decision that you make. What, if it goes back to the state, what they're gonna do is likely, they may go to the other prosecutors, but more than likely, they're just gonna roll us into another unit. Which means we may or may not keep our staff that we have now, who knows? But that's, that's gonna only be if they know for sure we're not gonna do the contract here again.
Rob, most of your expense is a fixed expense, no matter if you don't go to that county or not. It's all salary and.
Yeah, that, that's, that's probably eighty-five percent of his salary and benefits, and.
Vehicle, gas and stuff.
Yeah, you know, we did get, we do have a lease on the vehicle, which, you know, that's, that's up next year, I'm not gonna renew that. Chris has already dropped her family coverage to try to help the cause. Health insurance coverage. I'm still on just a single. I quit turning in my, I quit turning in my mileage probably two years ago. I mean, sometimes I turn in my phone voucher, sometimes I don't. I mean, I'm just, you know, every little thing I can try to do and, and but I, I just can't, I just can't make up the fifty thousand anywhere.
Is this something, though, that you would consider in order to keep the thing to go down to less people or a part-time person other than yourself? If that's what it takes?
Well, well, that's a tough question. Because several, several of the other units have went down to part-time people, which means they don't, the county doesn't have to then pay for their health insurance.
Right.
Or whatever. But typically, it takes a long time to get someone trained to do this, and a lot of times when the, the part-time people traditionally that I've seen come into APS are people that have already retired. A lot of times, law enforcement will retire, come work there part-time, four or five years, and then they're out. So there's gonna be a turnover issue with part-time. Full-time, you know, you run into the issue of the county policies on, you know, health insurance coverage and things like that, so when you, when you're talking about the area of six counties, and, and this did happen to me, you know, I, I had both of my investigators out at the same time for an extended period of time. So, you know, I had to cover all counties for six weeks by myself, which meant I worked seven days a week for six weeks. And, you know, twenty-five years ago, I could do that no problem. Now, it's a little tougher on Rob to do that, and, and we can only ask law enforcement to do so much. The guys are great about, in all the counties, all the law enforcement is super about helping us out, about going and doing welfare checks, helping us remove people. The EMTs are great, but they're not equipped to go in, and, and this last case I had in Green was like this. They were great at kicking the door in and, you know, securing the scene, wonderful. But then, I'm the one that's trying to get them a guardian, going to court, talking to the judges, trying to deal with Medicaid, trying to deal with all kinds of other financial issues with this and that, and that's, that's what I can't put on them. They're, they're just not trained, and they don't, and they, and frankly, they don't have the time. I, I just can't in good conscience tell a uniform officer, I'm, I'm short-staffed and you have to figure out how to apply for this person to get Medicaid or any other benefits, or talk to the social workers at the hospital, or figure out how to do the VA, or on and on and on. So, yes, they're a tremendous help, but they're, it's only to a certain point, and, and I, and it's just not fair to rely on them completely. So, so to get back around to your question, Dave, if, if everything goes fine, three people works great. We can make do with less, but our response times and things like that are gonna fall way back, and I will pride ourselves on my unit. We're one of the only units in the state that hasn't had a complaint about response time. There's a lot of units, a lot, that they'll get a call and it may be twenty, forty, sixty days before they even do the initial report. That never, never happens in our unit. Most of the time, we're on a call, at least answering it within twenty-four hours.
Question. We're, we're still three months out from budget on that. Yeah, not taking the state out of the picture, in dealing with the other counties that are involved, if someone were to help you to do that, to see if we could get any money from them, is that, is that okay?
That's perfectly fine.
Let's give it a month and we'll, we'll see where response, responses are from those people.
And, and, and hopefully by then I'll also know what the, what the contract is gonna be to the penny. You know, I, I'm, I'm making a big assumption. I may get lucky and Sherry call me in a month and a half and say, hey, Rob, you know, unit two and three here and four are gonna give you that shortfall, it's, it's on your contract, we'll send the paperwork out, don't worry about it, and you won't have to see me here again for this, and that's what I'm hoping for.
All I'm saying is, we'll see where your budget is, and let me, let me reach out to a few people.
Yeah.
And we'll come back to this and see where we're at in a month.
Okay, that's perfectly fine, and, and I will say that if anyone has any questions outside of a meeting, or feel free to email or call, and I'll try to, I'll, I'll definitely keep you guys on our end what I know when I know it. Because I, I definitely don't want to leave anybody in a lurch on this again. I, I know it was rough the last time.
That's true, but we need, we still need to continue to do what's right. So, give, give us a little time here and we'll figure something out.
Well, I, I appreciate you guys getting on this now, and hopefully we can avoid a crisis.
Thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Rob. Next up, infrastructure development. You don't look like Michael.
I don't.
Michael's in a tractor cab at the moment, I can verify that.
Michael looks a little different today. Morning, folks.
Morning.
How we doing? Good, good. Well, hey, thank you so much for the opportunity. Yes, Michael Taylor is on the agenda. I think he's actually on the phone right now with Patty.
I'm getting there.
Perfect.
Hey, Michael, you're on.
Alright, thanks. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Michael. So, what we wanted to do is come in front of you today, myself, the Economic Development Corporation has been working with the Davies County Commissioners for the past few months on really discussing broadband accessibility here in Davies County. As you know, RTC Communications, who I'm, I'm joined by several members of their leadership team here today, has been very aggressive in terms of delivering high quality, the best quality fiber broadband to over four hundred miles, five hundred miles potentially, I'm sure they will be getting into that, but here within Davies County, right? They've had a very extensive broadband expansion here in Washington that they're in the process of wrapping up. And they, you know, are, are very embedded into other rural parts of the county, but as we all know, the COVID-nineteen pandemic has really exacerbated the need for broadband accessibility. It's magnified that. As we've all been working from home, many of us have been working from home, schools have been e-learning, telemedicine has really picked up in prevalence, and broadband accessibility was an issue prior to the pandemic, but, but COVID-nineteen has really magnified that. So, we have been hard at work with several folks, as I mentioned, the commissioners, and we have actually retained Barnes and Thornburg, Tom Pittman, and we've been working with Jason Simler at Baker Tilly to take a look at some of the tools available to us, the Economic Development Corporation to county government, in which we can hopefully spur additional broadband investment and get to ultimately the goal being serving every single residence and business in Davies County with high-speed fiber broadband. That's the goal. That's what we're working towards. So, in doing some digging and some of the partnerships that we've formed, we discovered a tool that's available in state statute called an Infrastructure Development Zone. So this is recent legislation that has been put forth. It is part of state statute, it's part of the Indiana State Code. And what this does is it allows the executive body of a county or municipal government to establish an infrastructure development zone, which essentially provides an. to establish an Infrastructure Development Zone, which essentially provides an exemption, uh, of property taxes, personal property taxes, for various, um, utilities, right? So, the statute, uh, very explicitly identifies broadband, natural gas, I believe, electric and other private services that are provided. Because, um, RTC Communications, those other private providers, Vectren, for example, they all pay property taxes on all of that infrastructure that's in the ground, right? So, every mile of fiber that RTC Communications has, they pay personal property taxes on that, just like our industrial partners with, uh, the, the manufacturing, uh, equipment that they have in their facility, right? So, in taking a look at this Infrastructure Development Zone, we've put together a draft ordinance for that. Um, as I mentioned, that is the way that the, the ordinance is written. That is a, the responsibility of the executive body. So, that is the Commissioners. But in talking with the county Commissioners, and that's why Michael was on the agenda today and why he's also on the phone, they wanted to keep you, the legislative body, the fiscal body, in the loop as to what they are doing here, because it, it does have an impact, right? And typically, as the legislative body, you would be the body to approve any tax abatements, right? I've been in front of you many times in this ex- exact capacity, worked with an industrial partner, uh, an attraction project, an expansion project, in which, uh, tax abatement is a tax incentive to help them with their project. Um, so with that being said, we did, uh, want to keep you in the loop to make sure that you are informed on the process that we are moving forward, forward with, really allow an opportunity for, uh, discourse, for discussion between all of us, um, on, on this process that we're moving forward with, and to really allow RTC Communications an opportunity to, to explain the project at a high level that they're looking at and, um, and how this applies. So, with that said, I will turn it over to Michael if he has anything to add to that.
Now, you said it pretty good, Bryant, and, uh, we're always looking for different ways for, uh, quality of life issues in Davis County. I think broadband to every resident business is huge. And I think it's a pretty good opportunity for the county to, to do this and get, get the form with it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, and thank you, Michael. I mean, to that point, I would certainly be remiss if I didn't mention that. You know, all ninety-two counties in the state of Indiana are looking to do exactly what we have in front of you today. I mean, if, if implemented, this project will be the envy of those ninety-one other counties, right? In terms of delivering high-quality broadband to every single home and, and, and business in Davies County. That is huge. That's a game changer in terms of economic development in the sense that, uh, it opens doors for new housing development to take place in areas where it wouldn't be a possibility, right? I know when I built my home, um, here this past year, uh, one of the questions I asked is, is there, is there broadband? Is there high-speed internet there? If there's not, I wouldn't be where I am today, right? So, um, from a, a workforce standpoint and attracting the workforce that we need here, from a remote worker's standpoint, uh, you have counties that are developing economic development strategies, particularly around attracting remote workers, right? Um, so, you know, you can hypothetically have this situation in Davies County to where you can have, uh, a, an executive from, from Salesforce in Indianapolis, right, living right here in rural Davies County, and, uh, teleworking from their home, from their living room, from their home office, using that, uh, high-speed broadband, if it's available. If that is not available, then that's not an opportunity for us, right? So, um, yes, thank you. That's, that's exactly right, Michael. That's exactly right. So...
Commissioners have already approved this?
They have not. They have not. No, this was really the first step in, in announcing this publicly, um, and, and opening the, the conversation with the council. Uh, the schedule that we would be following is that this would be on the Commissioners' agenda at their next meeting, so I believe March twenty-third.
Would this be an abatement or an exemption?
It's an exemption.
Which is lifetime?
No, no. So, the way we are, we are writing up the ordinance is that this would be over a ten-year timeframe, a ten-year timeframe. So, we're still working through some of the details. I know with, uh, Denny, uh, and, and Patty and Barnes and Thornburg as to how that is regulated on the backend, right? Um, because with, with an abatement, obviously, you have your statement of benefits form and you have the annual reporting requirements. Uh, with this, it's a bit different. The, the legislation is writ, written far more loosely. Um, so I am waiting on a response from Barnes and Thornburg on, you know, how other counties have managed that. Uh, but we will be communicating that with all of you.
Well, the difference between a ten-year abatement and a ten-year exemption, we're not doing, uh, ten percent. It's a hundred percent way for ten years.
That's exactly right.
Then on the eleventh year, they, they zap in at a hundred percent.
At, on the eleventh year, all of that assessed valuation will, will hit the tax rolls. That's exactly right. Yeah. Any other questions for me before I bring up Kirk Lehman, the CEO of RTC? No? Okay. Well, Kirk?
Well, first of all, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about what we've got going at RTC and Bryant and County Commissioners. We appreciate your support. Um, just to bring you up to date, uh, RTC has invested about thirty million dollars into the county, uh, over the past ten years. Uh, twenty million dollars of that has been spent in the past three years. Um, all of that has been funded internally through RTC, through a free cash flow. And, uh, I tell you, I've been involved in every broadband discussion in the state and even from my home state of Minnesota. And part of making this success, uh, as we are setting out to make Davies County one of the first counties in the state of Indiana, a fiber-to-the-home, gig-served county, uh, you've gotta bring a lot of entities to the table. There's only so much cash that we have available to us to invest. So, we've been actively involved in the ARDOF auctions, the FCC auctions, USDA auctions and other things, and working with the EDA and, and other various government officials to try and, and make this thing a success. Uh, we have slated over the next five years to spend about twenty-five million dollars additional funding in Davies County to, um, bring broadband to every household, every business in the county. Um, but there's still some ancillary areas that we've gotta pick up that are quite expensive when you start dealing with rural broadband at about eighty thousand dollars a mile. Uh, it takes a lot of, of, of folks to come together at the table to make those, those projects happen. So, um, we've got a lot. We're part of the solution. We're not part of the problem. We wanna serve. These are our, our members. We're a co-op. We operate, obviously, out of Montgomery, so most of you are aware of us. So, that's kind of from a high level. That's what, what we've got going on RTC. Any questions?
What, what's your anticipated plan, start and finish?
Well, we've got three crews working right now, so we don't anticipate stopping. Um, uh, but we'll be working, uh, quite diligently over the next three years. Uh, under the ARDOF auction, we got thirty-five census block. We have to have forty percent of that completed in the next two years. Um, so, our, our, our goal is to keep moving, find those funding mechanisms so that we don't ever lift a plow out of the ground. Um, we talked to, uh, the EDA about an anticipated timeframe. If we can get all the components to come together, uh, over the next six months, we feel that we can complete Davies County's in thirty-six months.
And entire county?
Entire county. Yes, sir. Absolutely, absolutely. We have no issue with that at all.
If I may add to that, um, I do know that in where, uh, RTC or, or any other provider that would qualify and meet the standard that they could come, update that they are obligated to come. At that moment, just on, on the progress that they're making.
Question I have. We, we get this process going and you get it done or whatever, and then all at once, the board of directors decide, "You know what? We wanna sell RTC to a bigger company." Do we have to pass that abatement or exemption along to the next company? Or will we stay with who we originally signed the agreement with?
Sure, yeah. Um, you know, I, I'm not quite sure if that would follow property. I, I mean, that's, that's definitely something.
Yeah.
Patty, Patty, I don't know.
I understand. Yeah. Yeah. It might make it, you know, I'm thinking out of the box, but it will make it more marketable to someone if they're gonna try to do that, and whether or not we would have to comply with that. Or does it stay with the original, uh, person trying to, you know, do the project?
I'm thinking buyer.
Yeah.
Yeah, and in addition, you know, I, I never say never, but as a cooperative, uh, we've got pretty strong language in our bylaws that makes it nearly impossible for us to sell the organization. So, we have no intent in selling the organization. Our, our potential, our mission is to grow the organization. Much of our subsidy, or much of our support comes in the form of subsidies from the FCC. And so, really, RTC is trying to offset those subsidies and grow as quickly as possible, so that we're less reliant on government funds and stuff throughout.
Yeah, I, I understand that. And I know there's other co-ops, agricultural co-ops that are merging and growing and doing different things. And that's just, I, I'm trying to be proactive here and think about the big picture as to what might happen down the road and how, how does that affect everything? So...
Yep. Uh, RTC's position would be, we would be more on the, uh, acquisition side of the house than wired. Be grow.
No, that's a, uh, no, I think this is definitely a great project. Is there, is there, I mean, Bryant or, or Kirk, um, what's the estimated revenue savings, tax savings that you guys have for this project? Is there any numbers out there?
Uh, yeah, we do have some preliminary numbers.
Can you step up here for a bit, if I'm alright? Yeah. See, now the folks get criticized for, for speaking from the crowd. I, I don't wanna be slapped after, slapped on the wrist afterwards. Um, so, uh, so anyway, yes, we have pulled together a, um, an estimation on, on the taxes that this project would generate. Uh, we based that on information that RTC Communications provided us based on this bill. They've been phenomenal to work with, um, just in providing all of that along. That's where Baker Tilly really came into the equation. Um, it was far different than any other analysis we've run like this and that I provided you with on, uh, for example, a tax abatement, because it involves every single township in the county and all of those different tax rates, right? So, um, we do have it broken down by township. And, um, on an annual basis, uh, and, and we have it broken down based on what RTC provided into three different phases. On an annual basis, we estimate, um, that the project would generate about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars in tax revenue. But that is not new tax revenue that comes to the county, right? I mean, obviously, that's just, in a normal situation, passed through to all of the taxing districts. Um, so, you extrapolate that over a ten-year timeframe to which this Infrastructure Development Zone ordinance would be in place. Um, that's about, about one point one million dollars. So, now, that is an estimation and purely an estimation, right? Uh, there's so many variables that go into that in terms of the timing when RTC makes all of those improvements. Uh, with this assumption, that's assuming year one, all of that new assessed valuation is going to be in the ground, right? So, in, in all likelihood, it will be less than that, uh, because it's going to take them time for their construction crews to, crews to to actually put the fiber infrastructure in the ground and supporting, uh, network, network work that they are doing. So, uh, but it does paint a picture as to what the value of, uh, what the Commissioners are approving and what we're informing you of.
That's what we're looking at. So, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Does, can anybody use this fiber? Like, are you directly the company that goes to?
It's a private network. Absolutely. I mean, we, we would sell capacity on, on the network if somebody needed capacity. Uh, but it's a private network.
Cause you guys are part of IFN, so there's some deals that you made for this, yeah?
We are actually, I think, the fifth largest owner in IFN. But, uh, it was just announced, uh, yesterday that IFN has sold to Zayo. So, Zayo is actually our, our new partner, if you will. But we work with Smithville as well. Um, we have complete redundancy, which goes back to the design of our network. This is not a skinny network. This is not down and dirty network. This is one of the most robust networks you'll find anywhere in the country. So, we're doing it the right way. It's gonna set us up for many years. It'll be good for, for Davies County.
I know, I don't know if it got passed or not, but I know Senator Braun offered an amendment to the, uh, bill that just got passed over the weekend. And in it, he had some language changes so that there could be more money distributed for broadband in that amendment that he offered. And I don't know if it got passed that way or not, but, uh, it was kinda directed at farmers and farming and being able to bring, uh, broadband to them.
Yep.
So, I, I know you may all know more about it or whatever.
We do. In fact, uh, my chief operating officer, Lyle McVay, uh, we just recently added him to our staff about four months ago. He came down. He's an expert in grant writing. And so, we're, we're handling all the different things. We're taking advantage of every FCC USDA program that's out there, but there's many hurdles to get those grants awarded, many obstacles. Um, so, we're, we're, we're overturning every leaf, if you will, to try and get these projects done. The tax abatement exemption is a small piece of that. Uh, so, make no illusion, if, if, even with the tax, uh, exemption, uh, we need other funding mechanisms to make these things, these projects happen, right? So, as I talk about the twenty-five million dollars that we're gonna be spending over the next three years, some of that's coming from our own free cash flow, some of it's coming from, uh, ARDOF, uh, the FCC program, and some of it's coming from Community Connect, which is a USDA program.
Any chance of bringing your TV service back?
No.
Well, that was pretty definite. You would think, you would think with all this broadband in the ground that it'd handle.
Well, the problem is content is so expensive. We were losing, we audited our books back three years prior to, uh, me joining the organization. We were losing ten dollars per subscriber per month. I mean, it's a great service to have. Listen, I grew up on linear TV, but with our broadband, and if I can give you a product at your home that you're used to, using over-the-top, why would you pay for a linear service? And so, that's what we've been doing, is educating our customers. What is it you watch? What is it you view at home? If I can give you that access for a fraction of the cost to work with Dish, Direct, or any other provider, would you do it? And, uh, we've held about fourteen community events to bring in folks to educate them on how to do it. Over-the-top is, is really the way most linear services are going. If you look at DirecTV and Dish, they're even coming out with an over-the-top product to get away from linear TV because it's so expensive.
How affordable is this for the consumer, for the taxpayer?
Uh, sixty-nine dollars a month for what, a hundred meg service? And ours is synchronous, so it's, it's a hundred over a hundred, uh, with no data caps. And it's, uh, you know, you think about when you make an investment, if you're gonna make a ten-million-dollar investment and try to win customers, you'd want them under a contract, right? Well, we're so confident in our product, we, our customers are month-to-month. They can drop a service anytime. So, there's a little bit of risk involved in that as well, right? Somebody else comes into the area, another provider, so on and so forth, so...
Pretty good. Thank you very much.
Alright, you. I appreciate your time.
Next on the agenda, Westgate Bond, before Bryant. You go ahead and get up there, before Bryant talks.
You know, we've been talking about this and we know, we all know what the payoff number is. And if you look, there's only four buckets that we can pull from. And obviously, it's not raining. And if you look at the balance of the rainy day, there's a million dollars in there that's not our money, uh, to speak of. The riverboat doesn't have much. You look at county in general, look at how, the difference in general from last month to this month. I don't feel comfortable paying this thing off until we know we have some cash coming in from some possible excess property at Westgate. And that's what, so, until we have some bird in the hand in the bush there here, but until we have some offers where we know it's, no, we're not gonna rob Peter to pay Paul. And then cash is key and we, we could wind up having a problem. So, that's where Bryant's gonna tell us. That, that's my opinion. You guys say what you think here on a, on a million-five payoff. But Bryant's gonna tell us where we are on the property and then we will proceed from there.
Sure. Yes, thank you, Tony. I appreciate it. Um, yes, so, so Tony's exactly right. Uh, our board of directors, our executive committee, uh, our foundation board, uh, we're taking a look at options as to how we can, uh, potentially partner with the county in, uh, paying down or paying off that Westgate bond. Um, we are just on the heels- Westgate bond. We are just on the heels of finishing a master plan up at Westgate in partnership with the Regional Opportunities Initiative. They're the 11-county regional organization based out of Bloomington. They've really, in the past few years since the organization's inception, have taken a leadership role as it relates to the defense industry and how that works within the Indian Highlands region, Westgate being, in many ways, the heart of that, right alongside NSA Crane, obviously. So, they have funded this master plan, we are finishing it up. They're actually bringing a team on board to help implement that master plan. But as part of that, that planning document, they hired some folks to take a look out at a 20- to 50-year timeframe, right? You know, many, many years down the road as to what the likelihood is of the development of Westgate and where that development is going to take place. As they took a look at the size of the tech park compared to similar tech parks around the nation, they realized, wow, you know, between the three counties, you guys have a lot of property up here. And with the development pattern that takes place up there, it's not your large 50-acre developments that are happening in, let's say, an industrial or in a warehousing type operation. These are high-wage technology, engineering jobs, which in many cases require a cubicle, right, or a series of cubicles. So, it's smaller-scale development that is taking place up there. So, bringing it full circle to Tony's point, in taking a look at that master plan document and talking with some of our regional partners, the likelihood of the property south of 558 developing within the next 10, 20, you know, and further on years, is pretty slim at this point, right? The vast majority of the developments to take place in Westgate will most likely occur north of 558, within Davies County and really at the intersection, the confluence of the three counties there, where the development already is, quite frankly. So, we're taking a look at ways in which we can potentially liquidate some of that property and provide that, you know, in turn, partner with the county to pay down that outstanding bond. So, at this point, we are, we don't have anything finalized as to what that, that number, that price per acre is going to be. We're working through that at this point. But as soon as we do have that information and we do make that decision to list it, to not list it, we will certainly keep you all abreast of that. But that's where we're at at this point, and that's how it plays into the bigger picture that Tony described.
Tony, is that fair? How many acres is it?
There's 166, give or take, acres south of 558.
The whole property was only like 200?
No, the whole, there's about 330 acres in total up there.
Half of it was not usable?
Well, I mean.
I mean, that's a big number.
Yeah. Different times, right? I mean, that's been 10, 11 years ago since that property was purchased, right? So, and at that point, everyone was really still trying to figure out how, figure out how Westgate was going to develop. You know, would there be warehousing? Would there be storage of, you know, armaments and munitions, you know? And it's really not taking that direction, because Westgate responds to the growth of the defense industry in the region, and the growth is really exploding around the naval side of Crane, right? So, NSWC Crane, that's where the exponential growth is taking place, and those are those high-wage, high-technology jobs. So, I mean, I think to that point, I see where you're going, Tom, but I think the trajectory for the park has really changed in the past 10, 11 years.
And if I remember right, there was one owner of all that property, and it was all or none at the time, is the reason why it's, you know, we were piecemeal to start with, and every time we went back to buy another piece, the price got jacked up. So, in the end, if I remember it right, it was all or none is part of the reason why.
I believe you're right, Mike. I do.
I think, I think that is.
I believe you're right. Any other questions for me at this point?
The only other thing is, beyond the sale of the property, and if you do or you don't, is there any way that you could fund, over a period of time, amount back to the county or county projects, something that wouldn't have to come out of, you know, the general or whatever, to support in that regard?
Yeah.
Is that a possibility?
Absolutely. I mean, I think all-
I guess a commitment.
Sure. I mean, I think all options are on the table. I'd be very reluctant, I mean, obviously, I can't make a commitment now without knowing, you know, what we're even going to, you know, what is fair market value for that property, what the offers may come in at. But yeah, I think we're open to all options. And our board, and I know Tony can attest to this, but has had pretty in-depth discussions about how that could take place. So, yes, I mean, I would say really all options are on the table at this point, Mike.
You know, in all fairness, Matt and I sit on that board, which everybody knows, but let's, amongst us chickens here, we're all in agreement, until we know something here, we're not interested in writing a check.
I agree. The only problem I got is the escalating interest, you know?
We can do, we, before we do a partial or a lump sum, I thought we wanted to figure out where we're going here. If that doesn't happen in a month, then we can flop down, maybe up to 50%.
You have to go 10, you're going to go 10% on this one.
Well.
They're-
They're, they're working with us.
There's a large penalty.
The bank is working with us on that.
I believe Old National, at the moment, at the time, and that's probably been about a month ago, said they would reduce the prepayment penalty by 40%. Does that sound right? Tony, Patty? Yeah?
Yes.
But if you, if you look at, and we have it in front of us, buckets of where money can or cannot be pulled, you know, I'm not fond of general, I'm not fond of it's rainy day, and there's only one other option there, and then that bucket's broke.
Could we not pull it out of the Economic Development Fund there, the edit?
Yes, but there's only a million nine in there, and the payoff's a million five.
I know, I know.
And then there's obligations coming up. Granted, there's 112 a month going in.
Yeah, right.
Still, before we get it to that bare point, I would rather flop half of it down and save at least that much. And if we don't have answers on some firm offers next month, we'll try to entertain what we can or can't put down as a lump sum. But, obviously, we need to save whatever interest we can, but cash is king also, not knowing how everything is going to affect us. My thinking, but here, that's just my-
Yeah.
I'll add to that, Tony, in the sense that there is reflected on the Economic Development Foundation's books, because of the way that this bond was structured back in 2009, 2010, there is a debt service and debt sinking fund that is intended, that's on our books, it's not reflected on the counties, to my knowledge, but that is intended to make that final payment. So, it really boils down to about 1.1 million in additional cash beyond that debt sinking and debt reserve fund that would be needed for this. Is that right? Is that, is that fair?
Yeah, I think I had given those balances at the last meeting that the bank had given us as far as what was in those two other funds.
That's right.
In essence, we could put half down pretty quick and it wouldn't sting us.
Yeah, yeah. And as Tony mentioned, I mean, the edit, that's established in November of the previous year, right, in terms of what the edit is going to receive, $112,000 a month coming in from that, right? I mean, so there is, there is cash flow, right?
And correct me if I'm wrong, but that is a 6% bond?
That's correct.
That's correct.
And we talked to Jason about what, if something didn't work, to refinance that at a cheaper rate, and he said, from where it is, you know, the payments start in '24, from what it would cost, we'd better off to try to put money down and not refinance. So, basically, if Bryant doesn't have some sort of direction or firm offers next month, we will contemplate how much we want to put down as a lump sum.
How much are they doing to advertise the sale of it? What's happening there? I haven't heard anything about it.
Well, I mean, that's where we're in that process.
Oh, you're headed that way?
We're heading that way. That's exactly right. Yeah, we, I mean, the board, the board essentially made the decision, hey, let's look into our options, you know, but we haven't, you know, pulled the trigger on-
I understand.
-on that process just yet. That's what we're working through, so.
But there is a real, there is a realtor involved.
We've talked with the realtor, not formally engaged with those folks yet. Yes. Anyway. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Next up, salary ordinance amendment. That's you.
I think it's for, that is for Lynn Smith. She, $9,708. She retired beginning of the year. That's her payout for her leftover sick vacation and comp time. She was with us for 25 years, so she's over the 50. That one.
He's looking at the-
Make a motion, we pay that because we owe it to her.
Second. Motion by Dave, I didn't hear the second. Mike Myers, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Well, that's quick for you, Gary.
I know.
Next is the SARS COVID test thing, but that is grant money, but not part of the COVID lump sum.
Right, it's separate, separate money that's coming in through the Health Department.
Basically, that's cut and dried as well.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Motion by Matt, second by Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same sign? Transfers. Do you have any? Because they weren't in the package.
None, none that require your viewing.
Okay.
And the only other thing I see is just Mike mentioned, who direct us to do the salary ordinance amendments, as stated in those, a lot of this is just documentation because of those grant monies, and so, we just need, as a matter of record, to make a motion to adjust the salary ordinance accordingly.
You need a motion?
Please.
Motion for the salary adjustment?
Yeah, it's a salary ordinance. Anytime there's a change, we have to amend that ordinance for audit purposes.
So moved.
First by Mike, second.
I'll second it.
Joining that all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? You got anything else?
Yes, sir.
Anybody on the board? I think we've cleared house here pretty quick.
Can you talk about that committee?
No, we- I guess motion to-
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Dave, second.
I'll second it.
By Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? We are adjourned. Mike?
Yeah, thank you.
Stuff to sign?
Yeah, I'm not really familiar with them.
Where'd Mike go? Oh, he already leaving?
We put that first building down.
Okay, is there a door out back there?
We can go out through this conference room?
Okay, I wanted him to sign this first, so I guess.